I want to commend you guys for being here. Because as I said early on, that this was going to be an opportunity for you to learn some things, maybe that you hadn't learned before, in order to be able to take and move deeper into your ability to be able to study God's Word. Tonight, I want to do something that's a little bit different in the approach. We're still going to get into the process of looking at chapter 3. We're still going to get into the process of going through and looking at observations, interpretations, and applications. But I want to kind of reverse engineer it tonight. I want to give you another opportunity to be able to see how you can do this from a different approach. Now, we talked about how it's important that you read the text, right? And not just read what somebody says about the text, even though I showed you some great tools for commentaries and things like that, for you to be able to go out and get that. And you know what, you can do that. I even know folks that just go out and get all of their information off the internet. You can go out and you can ask, you could even go and ask AI, "Hey, explain to me chapter 3 of the book of James," and it'll give you a really great printed out report, it will. But what it will be potentially in content, it will be greatly lacking in spirit. Because the fact of the matter is that God's Word is alive, that which is meant to take and dwell within us by the power of His Spirit, to commune with Him by spirit, and it's not going to do the same thing. The words on the page don't mean the same thing as the word written in your heart. And so it's important that we come to the point of recognizing that as we study God's Word, as we study it, as we look to it, as we try to get to the place of recognizing, and yesterday I was a little bit hard on some of the guys, talking about, "Do you know more about sports scores than you do about Scripture?" All right? Not anymore? The question is, where's the greatest benefit? So what I want to do is, I want to start this evening, and you guys already have this, I want you to go within, for those of you that do have it, not everybody has it, but for those of you that do, go into the section to where there is the letter version of the text. The letter version, it's the one without any of the markups, it's out with any of the verses, or any of the headlines, or anything of that nature. It starts with, "My brethren, let not many become teachers," is where it's going to begin. And it should be listed as the letter version. It might take up, I don't think you guys have got it if you've just got the workbook package. You guys finding it? It's in the Faith Works package. Yep. Starts with, "My brethren, let not many of you be teachers," or become teachers. Is everybody there? It's not necessarily important that you are, you don't have to. I'm going to read it to you, and I want you to just pay attention to it in letter form. Don't look in your Bible right now, we're going to do that next. We're going to actually go and then look at it based upon chapter or verse content. But I want to just read this as if you were hearing it. If I said, "Hey, guys, I got a letter from James." James wrote us a letter, and I want to read you a portion of the letter, because I think it's important for us to be able to take and hear what James has to say. He's a cool brother, we know he was the half-brother of Jesus, we know that he's filled with the Holy Spirit, and so we want to listen to what he's got to say. And this is what he's saying to you guys, "Are you ready, my brethren? Let not many of you become teachers, knowing that you shall receive a stricter judgment. For we all stumble in many things. If anyone does not stumble, he's a perfect man, able also to bridle his whole body. Indeed, we put bits in horses' mouths so that they may obey us, and we turn their whole body. Look also at ships, although they are so large and driven by fierce winds, they are turned by a very small rudder whenever the pilot desires. Even so, the tongue is a little member and boasts great things. See how great a forest a little fire kindles. And the tongue is a fire, a world of iniquity. The tongue is so set among its members that it defiles the whole body and sets on fire the course of nature, and it is set on fire by hell. For every kind of beast and bird of reptile, a creature of the sea, is tamed, and has been tamed by mankind, but no man can tame the tongue. It's an unruly evil, full of deadly poison. With it we bless our God and Father, and with it we curse men, who have been made in this similitude of God. Out of the same mouth proceed blessings and cursing. My brethren, these things ought not to be so. Does a spring set forth fresh water and bitter from the same opening? Can a fig tree, my brethren, bear olives, or a grapevine bear figs? No. Thus no spring yields both salt, water, and fresh. Who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show by good conduct that his works are done in meekness of wisdom. But if you have bitter envy and self-seeking in your hearts, do not boast and lie against the truth. This wisdom does not descend from above, but is earthly, it's sensual, it's demonic. For where envy and self-seeking exist, confusion and every evil thing are there. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, and then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy. Now, the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace." In hearing that as you just did, without overworking it, I'm curious, what was something that was just said in that portion of James' letter that you heard and locked onto? What is it? About the tongue, what else? What did you hear?
How you can't bear like, a spring can't bear like, spring water plus a salt and...
You can't get fresh and saltwater out of the same spring. What else? Was there just anything that just caught your attention when I was reading through that?
My thinking, sometimes it just rationalize my thinking just because I believe in it. Just hearing that, I feel better than the first of them.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Dan? Oh, now you remember?
Our tongues, faith is evil, tongues is death and killing.
Okay.
I said, "We'll defy law and self, but nobody around me."
Okay. Manny? Got to speak really loud, man.
About becoming teachers and stricter judgment.
About being teachers, okay. About the importance and the stricter judgment, all right. What else?
Difference between earthly and heaven.
Ah, the difference between earthly and heaven. What else? Anybody else over here? This side of the room's not weighed in much.
Over in the stumble, so it's just going to happen. We just have to stay hopeful, it's all we need to stay hopeful about.
We have the choice, as the pilot of the ship.
Ah.
And is there a way to decide whether or not you want to use the word or not?
Okay. Any other sailors in the room picked up on the pilot thing? Even our coastguard guy missed that one. You heard it, right? Okay. So that's part of the observation process. You just read it, and what's going to happen is there's going to be certain portions within that text. Now, I read through it fairly rapidly. I read through it just as you would in normal pace of reading somebody's letter. But if we're reading that on our own, there's no reason that we can't even slow down even more and look at it as a word catches your attention. That's what you're going to take and throw into that observation column over on your chart. That's the idea behind this, is the taking without any other stimulus, without any other information, without any other purposing, what stuck out, what struck you in relationship to that message or that which was written. And this is where it's so important that we go to the Holy Spirit when we start this process, and we say, "I want you to speak to me." This is God's Word, it's alive. It's not only been breathed by God, it's not only intended for our good, it's not only intended for our instruction, it's intended to provide us everything that we need for life and godliness, through and interpreted and applied into our lives by the Holy Spirit. And so if we ask God to do something with His Word, He'll do it. Amen? He'll do it. He will absolutely take and bring this into a place of our understanding. Now, we're going to read this again, and we're going to read it from the version in the Bible. We're going to read it with the headline, we're going to read it with what it says in each one of the verses, and we'll see the numbers, and we'll see the breakdown, and you'll see the thought differences between what points happened where and how that takes place. But again, I'm backing into this to the point that I want you to understand, that it all starts with just reading the Scripture. We've been rushing to, and I get it, because it's been part of the drill, we've been rushing to the process of coming to the place of going in and tearing apart each verse and looking for an observation, or looking for something to take and to write down. I want us to just take and allow this to be something that just speaks to us. So what I would like to do, is I'd like to take and pawn this off on you guys to the degree that I'd like for one person each, based upon the paragraph breakdown, to take a paragraph and read it, identify where you are in the Scripture. If it has a heading on top of it in your Bible, tell us what the heading says, which is the theme for that section of Scripture. All right? You with me? So what does it say when we come to verse 1 of chapter 3? What's above verse 1 in your Bible as far as a theme? What does it say? The untameable tongue. Anybody got anything else?
Reality of faith tested by control of the tongue.
Ah, reality of faith. Schofield, oh, Schofield, yeah, he used a lot of words. Schofield studied Bible, he used a lot of words, I liked that. Okay. All right, somebody go ahead and take, and as one finishes, then go ahead and the other one just go, identify where you are, verse 1, chapter 3, go ahead.
My brethren, let not many of you become teachers, knowing that you shall receive a stricter judgment. For we all stumble in many things. If anyone does not stumble in word, he is a swift man, able also to bridle the whole body.
Yep, somebody else jump in, verse 3? Very loud, very loud.
We will put bits in horses' mouths that they may obey us, and we turn about their whole body.
Verse 3, indeed, we put this in horses' mouths, that they may obey us, and we turn their whole body.
Keep going, do the paragraph. That is the paragraph? Oh, I've got it broke down different than that, okay. All right.
Also at ships, although they are so large and are driven by fierce winds, they are turned by a very small rudder, wherever the pilot desires. Even so, the tongue is a little member and boasts great things.
See how great a forest a little fire kindles. The tongue is a fire, a world of iniquity. The tongue is so set among its members that it defiles the whole body, sets on fire the course of our nature, and it's set on fire by hell. For every kind of beast and bird, reptile, a creature of the sea, is tamed, has been tamed by mankind, but no one can tame the tongue. It is an unruly evil that holdeth that.
Unless our blood cluttered, which we curse again, but have been made in this similitude of God. Of the same amount, we must have compassion, but it's the tongue that will be so.
Three set for fresh water and bear from the same opening. And fig tree, my brethren, bear olives, or a grapevine, bear figs. Thus no spring yields both saltwater and bread.
Who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show by good conduct, his works are done in meekness of wisdom.
But if you have a bitter envy associated with hearts, do not boast and lie against the truth. This wisdom does not stem from above, but is earthly, sensual, and demonic.
For where envy and self-seeking exist, confusion and every evil thing are there. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield full of mercy and good fruit, without partiality and without hypocrisy. And now, the fruit of righteousness is sound and deep, I vow to thank you.
All right. This time through, did you pick up on anything else?
Blessed are the peacemakers.
Blessed are the peacemakers, what else?
On earth we are susceptible to the devil, of myself, my own thinking, and my own actions. Sitting, working, dealing.
Okay.
No man can tame the tongue.
Lean out on your own understanding.
All right, lean out on your own understanding.
Every time I keep reading, it comes with the, the wisdom does not descend from above, but is earthly, sensual, and demonic.
So we're seeing two sides of the tongue here, right? We're seeing two sides. Now, James is highlighting, and he is taking and specifically dealing with and talking about, really what is the negative side. He's talking about that which comes in such a way, that as he put it, comes from the fires of hell. Right? Let me ask you a question. How many of you in here have got hell on your tongue? I mean, how many of you in here can have stuff come out of your mouth that you wish didn't come out of your mouth? Yeah, I got a few more buying in on that one, huh? Right? Where does that come from? Where does it come from? What's going on in your mind? I mean, have you ever had that moment where something came out, and it comes sliding out, and it comes flying out, and you wish that you could like lasso it, shoot it, kill it before it goes to where it's going, but now it's already done, arrived, and now you got to try to back out of it? Has anybody other than me had that happen to you?
I feel like emotions. They don't let the spirit take over within our emotions, if they do.
Emotions.
Is it not the flesh part of us?
Yeah.
It's controlled by, well, that's, that's, that's controlled by Satan.
That's that whole fires of hell thing, right?
We do battle against that. The battle is in the spiritual realm, not the physical.
Okay.
And yet it, it has control over us if we let it.
If you let it, okay. I'll go, I'll buy that. What does the culture say when it comes to how men should respond and should talk? What is the cultural level of acceptance and relationship to the words that we use, right? Is somebody that is able to bark and command and swear with the best of them seen as being someone who is large and in charge as far as the culture is concerned? Or are they seen as rude and crude and unacceptable? Depends on where you're at. Okay, let's break it down. You're at the bar.
It's all checked in there.
All bets are out. What happens in the bar stays in the bar, right? Yeah, okay. Let's say that you had a ballgame in a public venue, you're at the ballgame. How should your speech be when you're at the ballgame? Should it? Is it? It's not, but it should be. It should be guarded everywhere, right? All right? How about standing in the grocery line at Walmart? Okay, let me ask you a question. As a believer, as a Christian, as one who's emulating Christ Jesus, let me ask you, did Jesus run into any rough situations? Oh. Did he have an opportunity, if he wanted to, to use colorful language? I mean, the most colorful that he got was referring to the Pharisees as "washed tombs" and "broods of vipers." I didn't hear him use any what would have been considered to be the slang of the day in relationship to how he referred to things. So why is it, why do we even as believers, from time to time, find it to be acceptable within our own beings to just row things out that we know we shouldn't? What's going on when that happens?
The tongue acts as an agent of the whole and righteousness of the world opposed to God. Hell, an illusion of the devil, is the coach of the souls of evil.
You studied a head. You get extra credit.
Or walking flesh, or, or senator of the spirit, or coming out with, like, you better our emotions separated in flesh rather than given in.
Who's in control of that? Who makes the choice? Now, I mean, ultimately, it's fun to blame other people, isn't it? "Oh, they made me so mad that I lost my cool." Does that ever happen to you? Somebody makes you so mad that you lose your cool? How is it that we are so easy to step back into that place of that which, according to what James is saying, ought not to be? We shouldn't be those that would allow our words to be that which brings death, that which brings the fires of hell. Now, I know that for some of you guys in here, this is something, and I told you the story behind my life, going into the penitentiary and being able to recognize that most of the words that you use inside of a penitentiary don't get much above four letters. Okay? I mean, there's not a great, you don't have a great didactic in relationship to bark and orders and deal with what's going on in there. There's not a high level of sophistication when it comes to discourse. But the reality is, is that we need to recognize that what comes out of us is what ultimately is in us. And if we know that that which is in us is going to come out in a way that dishonors God, or dishonors those around us, or brings to the place of failing upon our presentation of who Christ is in our lives, should we not desire to have that be something that is no longer a part of who we are? Now, let me ask you a question. How many of you struggle with this act? Leave it, I'll get it later. Here, let me put it up here. I will need that again, I'm sure. How many of you struggle with this at home? How many of you struggle with this with your spouses? How many of you can lose your cool and say things that you know you shouldn't say? That one's hard to get back, isn't it? I mean, that one's really hard to get back. It's hard to be able to reel and dial those things back, but the reality is, is let me, I'll cue you in on something. The nicer you are to your wife, the nicer she'll be to you. The words that you use with your wife that would be encouraging, the words that you use, because the thing that I love about this section is while we're looking at this and we're seeing the downside of what our tongue can do, we also then have to realize that there's another side of this, whereas what James is talking about is this uncontrollable, untameable tongue that brings about the fires of hell in relationship to the things that we say. But there's another side that allows us to be able to use the words that we use to bring life. And guys, what I'm talking about is I'm talking about the willful and the purposing of listening to what we say before we say it. Allowing there to be the opportunity for us to think about what do we want to accomplish in this situation? Now, you may be having that interesting and heated discussion with somebody that you know, your spouse, or someone of that nature. Do you really want to do something that's going to set hell on fire for three days and lose communication with your wife for that period of time? Most of the time, not so much, right? It's not really what we want to do, but that can be the result, right? And those of you that are laughing are only doing it because it's like, well, they wish it was just three days. But anyway, it's three. Normally, three days is about what it takes for everybody to get over it. That's about what you lose, is three days at a time, all right? But we have the opportunity to be able to go into this and do this from the exact opposite aspect. What do I want to accomplish with my words? Now, here's the thing that's so fun. You can do this with anyone, and it really, really messes with them. I love to be able to take and go into a situation where somebody is anticipating a fight. Somebody is anticipating harsh words. Somebody's anticipating that there's going to be this knock-down, drag-out, we're going to have to get into this war of words, we're going to have to get, and just be nice and pleasant and complimentary. I love to be able to tell people, and trying to be as sincere as I can, I'm not being patronizing, but being able to tell people that I appreciate the efforts that they're putting into trying to solve my problem. Now, let me tell you what, that goes a whole lot farther than saying, "You're a complete idiot, and you don't know what you're doing, and you can't fix my problem." I have that capacity too. Anybody else? But we have the ability to be able to speak life, to control. It's that whole aspect of being under the control of the Holy Spirit, yielding to the Holy Spirit, and allowing Him to be the pilot. To turn this ship that's got this rudder in the middle of our face that can either take us into the rocks, or take us out into calm seas, right? And so it's important that we understand, this is more than just, oh, clean up the way that you talk. This is something that we need to look at from a spiritual, and a strategic, and a purposing aspect of how it is that we not only want to present to other people, what do we want to present to them based on what the Lord is doing in our life, what we want the Lord to do in their life? What is it that we want to present to them that is for their best interest to try to bring them into a place of understanding? Now, we have a great, amazing opportunity right now with what's going on. The rhetoric right now is flying all over the place. I watched just a portion, actually the only thing that I've watched thus far of the service that was done for Charlie Kirk was Erica's presentation. Anybody else in here see it? Man, she could have said a lot, couldn't she? I mean, she could have, she could have really let fly. She's got good reason to want to let fly. She's got good reason to want to be able to take and to cast despair, especially on all of those individuals that are saying incredibly stupid things about this whole situation. We have an opportunity right now, based upon what's going on in the world, to be able to take and purpose to speak life. Or we can let that little thing in the middle of our face just wag and wag and wag and set things on fire in relationship. Now, what has to happen in order for us to make that decision and make the choice? What has to happen? You got to learn how to control yourself, what else? What has to happen?
Pray for the Holy Spirit to come today.
Okay. What has to happen before you even ask the Holy Spirit to straighten up?
Pray for your wisdom.
You have to what?
Pray for your people and your wisdom.
I've got three of you talking at the same time, I can't. What I heard was, "Oh, so salty, God." Pray for humility, all right? How about just making up your mind to do it? How about just making up your mind and purposing to do it? How many of you in here right now would honestly say, "I need to make up my mind to monitor what I say"? Wow. Hi, my name's Gary, and I'm a talkaholic. I sometimes use words that I, hi, Gary. I mean, we need to make up our minds and do it, and then understand what the purpose and what the reason. The reason that I want to do it is not just because I want to look better, it's not because I just want to do something that would cause people to be more in tune with what it is that I have to say. I want to do it because it honors God. I want to do it because it honors my Lord. I want to do it because it's allowing the Holy Spirit to have in my life control over the areas of my life that I obviously can't control, because no man can tame the tongue. We can't. It has to be through the power of the Holy Spirit. So we're going to have to ask the Holy Spirit, but what's going to happen? I can ask the Holy Spirit all day long, "Would you do this? Would you do this with you? Would you do this?" And if I don't set my mind to doing it, if I don't agree with it, it ain't going to happen. We have to will, and have the will, and have the determination. "I'm going to do this." Now, what that does is then sets in motion this process of learning how to do that. Of learning how to, because you know what? We don't know how to do that. It's not something, okay, well, I'm just going, all of a sudden, as of right now, I'm never going to do that again. That would be great if we could just, boom, and God would just download by the power of the Holy Spirit and just make that happen. Wouldn't that be cool? All right? Oh, man, that would be great. No, it's a learning process. Yeah. It's a learning process. There's something that we have to get into the process of saying, "I'm going to do this, and Lord, what I want you to do more than anything else is not just try to give me the download so that I could do this without any effort, I want you to remind me every time I fail. Every time I fail, Lord, I want you to take and go, "Remember what you said you wanted to do? Remember what you said that you were willing to do? I'm reminding you that that is what, that that's what it is that you want to do." So tonight, as we go through this, and we're going to do that here in just a moment, I'm going to have you go through and do the observation, do an interpretation, and do an application on each one of these. And now, the neat thing about this is, is that whereas we've talked about how literally you could go through each one of these verses and do this with every single word, I want you to do it by thought. I want you to look at the verse, look at what it says, what's the thought behind what is being said, make an observation, make an interpretation to what it means in your life, and then what kind of application that that's going to carry with it. So let's talk about right here in the first portion of it, verse 1, just as an example. "My brethren, let not many of you..." "My brethren, let not many of you become teachers, knowing that we shall receive a stricter judgment." What I pulled out of that was, teachers receive stricter judgment. And the way that I apply that is, you guys are all teachers. Because we are. We are all in the place of instructing. We are all in a place, especially as men of God. How many of you in here got a wife? Your teacher. How many of you in here have kids? Your teacher. How many of you have grandkids, great-grandkids? Your teacher. See, this isn't exclusive to, well, pastor, you really got, you better straighten up and watch what you say, man, because you're going to get judged. Yes, I am. I believe that even in addition to my role as a pastor, or in addition to my role as a father, as a husband, as a grandfather, I receive even a stricter judgment based upon what I teach you guys. But the judgment starts right from the get-go, because I'm a man of God, and I'm supposed to be the protector and the provider and the priest of my home. I'm supposed to be the one that takes and protects and provides within my home that which is of God. So, I have a responsibility, not only to make sure that the things that are supposed to happen are happening, but that I'm teaching it. And there's a stricter application. So, in my life, when I look at this and it says that there is, that teachers receive a stricter judgment, the interpretation to me is, rut row, I'm in trouble. My interpretation is, is that I am actually completely responsible for everything that I say. Let not many? It's saying, what is, what it's saying is, is it's kind of like, be careful what you ask for. It's saying that if you're going to purpose to put yourself into a higher level of a position of instruction. Now, remember what was happening at this particular point in time, and what's still happening in certain religions, is that there are those that are recognized as being the messenger of God. Be careful with that. But what I'm telling you is, is that the application of being a teacher and being a protector and a provider and a priest applies to everybody. But what he's doing is, he's saying, listen, don't think that it's a great thing. Don't think that what you want to do is just jump out in front and be in charge and large and be able to take and do this, because there's a higher responsibility that goes along with it. But I don't want you guys to think that somehow or another that you get to dodge that responsibility. You gotta talk really loud, man. And I think that at that particular point in time when he was writing this, that the application was much more refined to those who were recognized as those that were in that position, or even in that occupation of being a teacher. We used to hold up schoolteachers like that, remember? We used to hold up public schoolteachers and professors. If you were a professor at a university 100 years ago, you were, you were considered and hailed to be a very highly regarded individual. Remember that? Not so much anymore. And now, we've got a platform that's out there that anybody that wants to can spit out words just to see if they splat, in order to be able to take and see that their point gets accepted, or gets encouraged, or gets received, and their instruction goes by virtue of their opinion, not by that of which they know. And so, I believe that what's being held there is, anytime that you find yourself in the place of instruction, of being a teacher, even if it's just simply a matter of who you are and based upon what it is that God has called you to do, understand, you are responsible and accountable for what you deliver. You're responsible, you're accountable. Another one of those reasons why we want to go to the Lord and we want to say, Lord, I want to be very, very mindful of the things that I say. Have you ever taught somebody something wrong? Have you ever demonstrated to somebody a wrong approach or a wrong? Yeah, have you ever just, at the end of something coming out of your mouth or the way that you just acted, you just went, oh, man, that was wrong? Or you saw somebody else do it? Yeah, it's always better when somebody else does it. We don't want to, we don't want to be the ones that are involved in that process. And so, what's the application to that? What application do you have in your life, based upon whatever responsibility or area of responsibility that you would have as one of instructing or teaching, that you need to recognize that you're responsible and accountable for it? That's the type of thing that I want you to go through this next section of Scripture. We're going to take about 10 minutes. And I want you to go through chapter three, and for, thought for thought. You don't have to take and try to break it down word for word. Look at verse one, and then move on to verse, verse two, and see what it says there, see what catches your eye, what you observe, take and make an interpretation, and then do an application. Tonight, let's see, we got about 35 guys in here, so we ought to be able to do about eight tables. Does that sound about right? Do we dare count off? Or do I just leave it up to you guys to find your way to a table and make a group? All right, so before we get into it, you guys find your way to a table, try to get about four guys, or no more than five at a table, and see if we could even up the room a little bit, all right? So, make your way to a table. All right, based on what you guys just did, I want to ask, is there anybody in here that saw something that you would be willing to share with the entire group, rather than just the group at your table? Has anybody in here seen something and it's like, wow, I really need to do this, or this is something that I believe the Lord is talking to me in relationship to application, and you would be willing to come and share? Come on up here, so where everybody can hear you. You guys may not know this or not, but this is Scott. This is my son-in-law. I brought him just as a shill tonight, so. You gonna like confess this in front of your father-in-law and everything?
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, no worries. Um, one of the ones, let's see, I did it all on one sheet, so I kind of, kind of didn't do it correctly. The verse that really stuck out to me was really about, just our, I'm just going to go off the cuff right now. It's just about taming our tongue, and in general with, I want things to come out of me being fresh water, not things of salt. And I know that I have a problem with road rage. I speak highly of myself. Okay, I speak highly of myself when I'm driving, thinking I'm the best driver on the road. I live in Seattle currently, so I have a lot of terrible drivers, so I think. Things come out of my mouth, even when I'm by myself, that I'm not too proud of, and directed at others. And even though people may not hear me, these are things that I don't want to represent, because, I mean, reading the Scripture, it just says, you know, fresh water can't come, or fresh water can't come from where salt water comes from. So, to me, that really speaks to me. Ways I'm going to apply this in my life is read. Before I go to work, read a verse, try to center, do prayer as I usually do, apply that into my life. And anytime I feel, any moment of someone cutting me off, or maybe they're driving maybe more ridiculous than I think that they need to be, try to step back and then try to measure that somehow, and maybe bring it back to, you know, if I do end up sparking it, maybe that needs to be longer prayer in the morning. And that's, that's kind of how I'm going to measure that and treat myself to that.
Go pass that over to that guy. All right, anybody else got a specific that you would like to share?
The last, very last one. "Now the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace." So, I remember when I was up to 45 years old, I used to make grown men cry with just my tongue. And it didn't matter who it was, I didn't, like, brother before us, I thought too much of myself, way too much. And I always thought that everything revolved around me. So, I used to just let people have it, and I'd make grown men cry quite regularly. And at the time, I wasn't ashamed. And when I found the Lord, I still make grown men cry, but that means when I pray for them and the Holy Spirit speaks through me, it allows me to interject into their lives of things they know not, but the Holy Spirit does. And then, by the time I'm done praying, they say, how did you know? And they're crying and weeping. And it's by far more satisfying to speak into someone's life and let the Holy Spirit speak through me, because only He knows what's going on in their lives, and do the exact opposite of what the Lord guided me. So, this entire chapter is based on what you're going to do with your mouth. You're going to use it for filth and for blasphemy and hurting people? Or you're going to turn around and use it for God's glory? So, I suggest every one of you think about it in that term. Yeah, you can use your tongue to hurt people, or you can use it to love on them. Loving on them is what God wants you to do. So, use it for what God, He gave you two ears to listen, one tongue to speak.
All right, anybody else?
So, for, the one that spoke to me was, "For out of the same mouths proceed blessings..."
Pull that up a little closer, man.
"For out of the mouth proceed blessings and curses that are not to be." I just have a hard time when I'm frustrated, especially, you know, lately at work. You know, I'm a mechanic. And, you know, I don't really curse at my family or when I'm having conversations with people. But when I'm by myself, I tend to just let it rip. You know, just like, you know, just, I don't know, it's just, you know, I, you know, I guess I was thinking, you know, nobody's around, nobody's hearing what I'm saying, but it just speaks to me. You know, the Lord's always listening. And, you know, I just going to work on, try to maybe do some breathing exercises or something before I, you know, just let it go like that, you know? And that's what I got out of this.
Okay, so, I don't really have an issue with swearing too much, because when I became, I wasn't, no, I'm sorry, I don't. But I was, when I was in the service, I couldn't even, I couldn't even say a sentence without saying the F word four times, you know? But the day I got saved, the Lord healed me of that, and it hasn't been a problem since. But I do say stupid things, don't I, Pastor Gary?
I, I...
He, he can attest to that. So, I, mine was verse two, when it says, knowing, it says, "For all, for we all stumble in many things. And if anyone does not stumble in a word, he is a perfect man." And you can also interpret that perfect man to be a mature man. So, I'm striving to be more mature. I see that I need to curb my tongue, think about what I'm going to say before I say it, just going to stick it right out there. So, I need to control my thoughts, first of all, and then take a second before I open my mouth. I think we've been using your, I think, one, two, three, four, five, and then, and then say what you're going to say before you say it. So, that's, that's, that's basically what my application is, just be careful what you say, know what you're saying. Knowing that we're not perfect, we're not, we're going to stumble, and we're striving to be more mature in our speech.
Very good. So, the stumbling aspect is automatic, right? I mean, it really truly is. I mean, it says, if you don't, then you're a perfect man. Well, there's, we're not going to arrive at perfection, that's, that's certain. But what is the balance for our imperfection, if not grace? It's the grace of God. And it's that same grace that God allows us when we're not perfect that we should probably seek to apply to others when they're not perfect, right? Anybody else besides Scott in here has, has a tendency to talk to other drivers on the road? You know what's interesting? My, my wife has an observation. And I tell her, I'm just, I'm just sharing with them what they should know. And she, and she'll say, but they can't hear you. And guys, there's, there's so much truth in that aspect of just being kind of that ready, shoot, aim kind of, kind of aspect that we have to the things that will come out of our mouths, is we don't even recognize sometimes that it doesn't even have the effect on anything outside of us, right? And one of the persons that we need to be cognizant of that we're speaking to is the very person that is speaking at the moment that we utter, right? Whatever we say, we also hear, right? Comes out of your mouth, comes back into your ears, right? And all of a sudden, you think two people just agreed with you, because it comes in between both ears, right? And that's not necessarily how it works. But the things that come out of our mouth, if they're coming from this place of bitterness, if they're coming from this place of strife, if they're coming from this aggravation with that idiot in front of you that's got their left turn signal on in the right lane doing 45 in a 55. Yeah. Who's frustrated? Where's the, where's the damage taking place? What's happening in that situation? Now, as guys, one of the things that happens with us that is more difficult for women, because they don't understand it, we can like flare up, burn out, and be done with it, all right? We can have that, but it's still not good for us. It's still not good for us. It's still that which is defeating us and causing us to have that, even if it's just for an instant, even if it's just for that moment where we lose it, where we go into that, that situation. We may get over it quickly, right? Or think we got over it, but it's not a matter of getting over it, it's a matter that it is still residing within us. It's still residing within us. We talked a couple of weeks ago about that whole aspect of what comes out when you get squeezed, right? So, what I want you guys to do is think about specifically, because one of the things that, that we've got to do in order to be able to try to affect some change is we have to strategize some sort of plan or some sort of initiation of a process to try to bring about that change. And so, I want you to think about, for the next few minutes, I want you to think about three things, three different things, that if they happened, would cause you to be better representing of the Lord in your speech? Or if they didn't happen, would cause you to be a better representation of the Lord in your life? Three things, just three things, simple. This isn't like, oh, I'm going to change the entire way that I formulate every sentence that I ever speak in my life. No, it's going to be, I'm going to take, and I'm going to put a Scripture in my mouth, and a Scripture in my head, so that it'll come out of my mouth. And when that person is in front of me, instead of saying what I think I want to say to them, I'm going to say, God bless you, instead of me blessing them with my words. So, it's either three different things, three little changes, three things that you can do, or three things that if you don't do, you with me? Will make a better representation of who you want to be in Christ based upon the way that you speak, all right? It could be involving in your, in your home life, it could be involving in your work life, it could be involving in just who you are, it might be even just that which you speak to yourself, okay? But just come up with three things, just write them down. That's what I want you to practice this week. I want you to try to practice those things this week, all right? To affect a change. Now, what I'll tell you is, is that every time that you practice it, every time you get to the point that you practice something a dozen or more times, it starts formulating a trend. If you do it more than that, and it becomes part of a process and a practice, it'll actually become a habit. And if it becomes a habit, it'll change your behavior. That make sense? But you got to willingly do it. So, what are three things that if you do, or if you stop doing, that will cause you to be a better representation of Jesus Christ through your speech and how you talk? All right, so come up with those and get them wrote down. All right, don't overthink it. Real simple. Just make it simple to begin with. We don't want to complicate and solve all the world's problems just to, just start moving in the right direction. Anybody got, or willing to share at least one of your, one of your things? Okay, let's get the microphone moving around there.
He was in believing me that I was going to talk. So, I do three things. I do three things, which is prayer at night. I wake up often in the middle of the night because of pain, so.
Get closer, man, we can't hear you.
So, I pray in the middle of the night multiple, multiple times, because I cannot sleep through the night. So, I have to constantly be getting up. So, what I do is I, I pray in thanksgiving to the Lord, because if not, I become very grumpy in the morning. Second thing I do is I typically sing hymns, typically Spanish hymns, even when I'm driving, just so I can relax my mind. And the third thing that I do is when I'm trying to teach my kids something, because I got mad at them, I do something where I tell them, let's start over. So, let's forget this. I got mad at you, I talked to you, I sternly talked to you, let's start over. Not to say that it's a race, I wish... Not to say that it's erased, I wish it was erased from memory, but let's start over and let's readjust our attitude. So that's something that I do. A lot of people don't know that my natural being is very anger person. I approach my life differently, and a lot of people think that I'm very passive in nature, and that's done purposely because I don't want to get to the point where I know I can get to.
Over here, who else wants to share? Oh, come on, there were more hands than that that went up. Alright, come on.
Tess? Just pause.
Pause?
Teach myself to pause and then kind of say something positive, like, "Practice the golden rule, treat others as I would like to be treated."
Alright.
Yeah, for me, it was stoplights. The Lord, no, really, stoplights. It gave me that time, you're not going anywhere, right? You're not going anywhere. You can get angry, you can yell and curse and what have you, but the Lord used that for me as that time with Him, so to be slow to anger, slow to speak, quick to listen. But stoplights was it for me.
So my word spoken, is it virtuous or selfish? Virtuous is a, the attributes are faith, self-control, and love. So that's my biggest thing, is I open my mouth and I unleash hell.
Okay. So you gotta hold that tongue.
I do a little bit of greeting around these doors in this church. And one of the things that I constantly do, and I've gotta really retract that, I think, is I ask a person, "How are you doing?" And it's gotta happen one or every time. Better than I deserve. They'll reply with that if I don't change the question. So my thoughts are, what question should I be, you know? Do I have to pose a question? And that's what I'm thinking about is...
A great question to ask people, that catches them off guard, but always, I think, endears them, is, "Is there anything I can pray for you about?" One of the things that we do when we get ready to sit down for a meal is if we're getting ready to pray before the meal, we wait for the waitress to come over, right? And when the waitress is there, we'll say something like, "Hey, we're getting ready to pray for our meal. Is there anything that we can pray for you about?" And it's amazing. We've had waitresses literally just break down and cry and sit down at the table with us and tell us about what's going on in their lives. We've had other people look at us and go, "No, I'm fine, it's all good." It's like, "Well, I'm just gonna pray that things stay that way for you," right? Sure you can. Sure you can. "I hope your day's going great. Is there anything I can pray for you about as you're coming into the house of the Lord?" Absolutely.
Well, I'm real friendly when I'm bad-mouthing these people, and I'm waving, just saying all sorts of nice things, you know? And then every now and then, they wave back, and I'm thinking, "Oh, this didn't work out." But we gotta remember, the hater always hurts worse than the hated.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a thing of hatred there until, you know, you let it go. And you gotta let it go. And one thing that I use a lot is verses, and I'll recite verses and stuff, but I don't start it until after the hate and the hatred all takes effect. And then now, it's time to pray. But we should pray and stuff before.
Alright, I got one more over here. Dave had something to share up here, and then we're gonna close up.
I'm in voice. Don't down-talk yourself. Like, if you do something ignorant, or you do something like, "Why did I do that?", say, "Man, what am I doing here?", or something like that.
Okay. So we need to encourage ourselves as well as others, right? Alright, good. Alright, so guys, here's the thing. We're rolling into this. We've got two more chapters in James that we're gonna kind of continue in this process to some degree. It'll change up like it did tonight a little bit to where we had just a little bit of a different application in how we're gonna do this. And I want to encourage you, don't stop. Don't drop out, right? You're in the home stretch on this thing right now. We'll finish up James, we'll finish up that, and then we'll be moving on to the next thing here as the Lord wills. But in the meantime, take those three things, whatever they are, and you can come up with more if you want. If one of them's really, really big, focus on that one and do that one more than anything else. But take and start making a practice of doing the things that you want and will to do to change what comes out of your mouth, right? You good with that? Alright. Anything else going on that we need to share tonight before we pull out of here? And he cursed at you? You know what? I have had what I believe are encounters with demons when I've asked people if I could pray with them, alright? And sometimes that's what it is. But how we respond makes all the difference in the world, alright? Alright, well, Heavenly Father God, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you that we can look into your Word, Lord. There's not any of us here, sitting right here, right now, that do not need to try to control or at least try to bridle this tongue that's between our mouth and our will. Lord, I ask that we would be those who would just focus on that which is of praiseworthy report, that we would meditate on that which is good, which is virtuous, which is worthy, and Lord, that we would take also and we would look to edify and build up not only each other, but those that are around us. Lord, we live in a world right now where there is so much just demonic activity, so much evil in everything, Lord. And if we can present and bring light, then may it be, and may it come from us through the words we speak and through the representation that we have of you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.